Good evening. I'm Anna Kinney. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Loudoun County. Thank you all for coming, and thank all the candidates for coming. I want to also thank our cosponsors: 350 Loudoun, Aldi Heritage Area, Moesby Heritage Area, Edwin Washington Project, Save Rural Loudoun, Taylorstown Community Association. And I'm going to introduce our moderators before I pass this over. Joe Lupino Esposito is an attorney who works at a bipartisan, nonprofit, public policy group that works to honor, preserve, and restore principles of fairness in the criminal legal system. He works primarily in Washington, D.C. with members of Congress, their staff, and allied organizations to develop criminal justice reform policies that focus on protecting our constitutional rights. Joe is the issues committee chair of the Loudoun County Republican Committee. He lives in Round Hill with his wife and two daughters, and serves as president of the Round Hill Owners Association. Ray Cheatham Banks is a communications specialist with a lengthy legislative and policy background. She has worked for a number of state and local government agencies, including the office of the lieutenant governor of Virginia, where she served as a senior policy analyst. Prior to her work for the state of Virginia, Ray spent more than a decade working on death penalty issues, first as a mitigation specialist, preparing clemency petitions on behalf of death row inmates, and then as a key figure in the establishment of Virginia's first death penalty resource center. She served as the press secretary for the United Negro College Fund. Ray is currently working on criminal justice reform issues across the country. She holds a Masters of Public Administration from Ashford University and a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from Virginia Commonwealth University, and serves as the vice chair for the Loudoun County Democratic Committee. So I'm going to turn this over to you, and then the moderators can begin.
All right. Well, thank you again, everybody, for coming. I apologize to awkwardly tell everybody what the rules of the night are. I am an attorney, but I am not your attorney, but I do have some legal things to tell everybody. Candidates, some, especially not any of your attorneys. The safety and security of all attendees is our primary concern at this event. In the event of an emergency, please exit the building through the nearest marked exit. In the event of a security incident, please notify law enforcement immediately. Anyone engaging in disruptive behavior will be asked to leave the property. This is a nonpartisan candidate forum governed by the League of Women Voters guidelines. Questions were submitted from attendees and members of the host organizations. The moderators considered those submissions, and we alone made the final decision on which questions to include. We are also accepting additional questions from the audience as submitted on the three-by-five cards available from ushers in the aisles. If anybody will point out -- well, you'll find them. All questions will be asked by the moderators. If you have a question for an individual candidate, please direct them -- direct it to their office. Each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question, except for the first question, which will be acting as a opening statement, and they will have 100% more time, two minutes. League timers are seated up front, and they will display time cards to keep answers to the time limits. At the end, each candidate will have one minute for final remarks. We will be calling on candidates to respond in a different order each time, at least starting at either end, and maybe even in the middle. The event is being recorded. All candidates should identify themselves at the beginning of each response by stating their name and district. The recording will be available at the League's website. We ask that all candidates be treated with respect. In the interest of time, please refrain from clapping or vocalizing. You're all welcome to do hand wiggles, jazz hands, thumbs up, thumbs down, whatever you want. Just let's -- we'll just try to keep it moving. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ray to take the first question.
Great. All right. To get us started, we're going to ask a very general question. Please introduce yourself and the district you are running in before answering. You will be allotted two minutes for this question. We'll start with Julie Briskman from Algonquin. What is the most pressing issue before the Board of Supervisors, and how do you propose solving it?
Am I supposed to use this?
Yes.
Okay, so these don't work?
They don't.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you so much for having me. Boy, the most pressing issue in front of the Board of Supervisors, that is loaded. I think our most pressing issue in the county is following through on our comprehensive plan, and I think when we do that, we need to make sure that we address our unmet housing needs. I think that that is the most pressing issue in our county because it affects everyone, including working families, our teachers, our first responders, healthcare workers, and all of the above. As we sit on the board in 2020, the first thing we're going to do is work on the unmet housing needs strategy, and I'm very much looking forward to doing that.
Thank you. Please pass it to Jim.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bonfield, and I'm running for the broad-run supervisor seat on the Loudoun County Board of Supervisors. So the question is, what's, I think, the most pressing issue? Generally, I can't bring it down to just one, but I think there's a lot to be said about workforce housing and workforce training in our community. It's very important that we address those. It's just one of the biggest things. What we forget, and it does come into the comprehensive plan, we have high demand. People want to live in the county, and that continues to drive the price of the housing up and keeps people from being able to move in. So we have to find some ways. I want to look outside the box, things that haven't been thought of before. Some of them may be -- may sound like silly ideas, but let's find a way to solve this problem. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Glass. I'm running for broad-run district supervisor. I believe the most pressing issue before the next Board of Supervisors is how the metro will affect Loudoun County. The metro is planned to be in operation by mid-July in 2020. Having a metro in our area will help relieve congestion on our roadways. It will show businesses that we have multimodal transportation or transit in our region so that employers can bring businesses in our area. There's a study that shows that close -- that finds a close connection between transit access and startups of all types of businesses. We have an opportunity to bring different types of housing near the metro as well, and the areas near the metro will have an opportunity to have diverse types of housing. So we could have townhomes, condos, apartments, which will help with the lack of housing that we have in our area. I think affordable housing is another pressing issue that we have for this board. We can have smaller units built and be able to increase the workforce housing for people such as our first responders, our teachers, our single-income earners, as well as our seniors to age in place. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Forrest Hayes, and I'm running for the Loudoun County Board of Supervisors in the Catoctin District. Over the past 20 years, I have worked at every level of government, specifically as senior staff to two House subcommittees on appropriations, four members of Congress, three mayors of major cities, and most recently, our governor appointed me to the Virginia Housing Commission. Now I am ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work for my friends and neighbors. If elected, my first act will be to expedite the already-approved Phase 1 plan for Route 15 and finally break ground in 2020. Haven't we waited long enough? But traffic is just one of the problems the next board will confront, and we can't afford another four years of business-as-usual policies. We must prepare for the future. Workforce and attainable housing. According to the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, our region must produce 365,000 new units of affordable housing by the year 2030, just to keep pace with the growth in population. I have produced over 6,000 units of multifamily housing, and I am prepared to use all my experience to lead the effort to implement a workforce housing platform that provides policies and funding sources designed to support large-scale multifamily rental and for-sale housing options for teachers, police officers, firefighters, service industry workers, and county employees. In addition to more workforce housing, we should invest in permanent supportive housing for disabled residents, senior housing, veterans' housing, and housing suitable for a tech-savvy workforce. Thank you very much.
My name is Bob Onizer. I'm running for chairman of the Board of Supervisors, and I think the Board of Supervisors' agenda, which is primarily the responsibility of the chair, needs to be refocused toward fairness, efficiency, and community support, not ensuring developer profits, which fund both my opponent campaigns. Why is this important? Over my 25 years residing in Loudoun, serving on the school board, and many charitable organizations, I am amazed most Loudoun-registered voters don't vote in local elections. Is it complacency, satisfaction with traffic, heightened taxes, and repetitive inefficiencies, or Neville Chamberlain-type surrender to developer-funded inevitability? I'm concerned -- did you laugh at that? I'm concerned that people don't vote for a reason, and that reason needs to be rectified. And we need to look at that honestly. This is a wonderful county, but if you've given up already on being able to change the direction of the Board of Supervisors, that's a problem that needs to be solved. Now, while I was on the school board, I chaired the Finance Committee for seven years. I understand the budget of the school system better than most, and if I'm elected, I'd actually be the only school board member even on the Board of Supervisors. Most recently, the superintendent put in a request for $133 million for 1,244 more students. That's a little under $100,000 per student in a system that cost -- I see it -- that costs approximately $17,000 per student with $4.4 billion in capital backlog, so we don't have crowded classrooms because you've got to have seats for the kids, and you've got to improve the education. I've donated my time over the 25 years we've lived here, and I'm prepared to manage the agenda and work with both parties, which I have been in both parties, even though I'm currently running as an independent. I look forward to your questions and your support. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Phyllis Randall, and I'm the current chair of Loudoun County. First, I want to thank the League for doing this. You know, the League of Women Voters really is the oldest and one of the most effective voting rights organizations, and this debate is so important, and I would not have missed it for the world. So thank you, League. There's a couple of things I want to tell you. One, by profession, I'm a mental health therapist, and I worked for many years in the county system. And what I knew when I became chair is that Loudoun County employees were underpaid and overworked. So we instituted a comping class study. When I got here, the county employees were making $0.86 on the dollar. Today, they make $0.95 on the dollar, and I will not be happy until they make 100%, which is one reason why I'm running again. The other reason is the school system. When I got here, the last board had underfunded the school system by $95 million in three years, and our teachers had a significant lag in pay. Today, the starting salary for our teachers is the highest in Virginia. And oh, by the way, when I -- when we started, this board started, full-day kindergarten was only offered to 11% of our students. Today, because we've adequately funded the schools, full-day kindergarten is offered to 100% of our students. That is a success in anyone's judgment. We hadn't done a comping class study, I mean, sorry, comprehensive study in Loudoun County for 18 years, although by law, it's required to be done every five years. We have finished with this board, the comprehensive study, and I left that effort. Next board will have to do zoning, which is even more intense than land use, and I am excited about that. And finally, the economy. Since we have been in this board, this board, we have created almost 18,000 new jobs in Loudoun County, 10.5% increase of people who work in Loudoun County with a 7% increase in their pay. Loudoun County's median income has now risen to $114,000 a year. It remains the highest in the country, and we retain our triple-A bond rating. I'm running because I'm not finished. Thank you so much for having me here today.[868.82][868.82][applause]
Good evening, and thanks, League of Women Voters and partner organizations, for putting on this forum, and thanks to everyone in the audience and all the candidates who decided to show up tonight. I'm Sam Croys, and my wife Molly and I are both full-time farmers on my family's farm, George's Mill Farm near Lovitzville. My young daughter and son are the ninth generation of my family to live and work on our farm, and we have been milking our herd of dairy goats and making artisanal goat cheese since 2013. I'm running for Catoctin Supervisor as an independent candidate because I have no interest in playing partisan political games or serving the special interests that bankroll both parties. I'm running to keep rural Loudoun rural. That's what the overwhelming majority of Loudoun citizens want, and I can't operate my farm surrounded by suburbia. My livelihood and my family's way of life depend on rural Loudoun staying rural. Everybody says that they want to keep rural Loudoun rural. It's an easy thing to say, though it is a bit of a tongue-twister. Sadly, both parties have been doing a poor job of it. In fact, parties are a big part of the problem. We have lost 10% of our farmland over the last five years, which is an acceleration from the previous five years. The current board recently came together in bipartisan fashion to take a big bite out of the rural area and move the rural transition boundary for the first time since there's been a boundary. Both parties spin this decision with a rationale we can expect to hear again soon. It's just a little bit, it's just next to X, Y, and Z, and it's not that rural anyway. We are losing rural Loudoun with business-as-usual, and we need to do something different. That's what I'm here to offer, something different. We'll get into the many ways that I am a different and better candidate than the gentleman to my right and the one that decided not to show up, but it starts with the fact that I refuse any developer donations while they both accept them by the tens of thousands of dollars. If you think business-as-usual is the answer to keeping rural Loudoun rural or any of our other issues, then you have two fine options to my right in business-as-usual A and not here in business-as-usual B.
Thank you. Your time is up. Could you pass the mic? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Laterno, and I represent the Dulles District on the Loudoun County Board of Supervisors. I've had that pleasure for the last eight years. The job of a district supervisor is twofold. We vote on things for the entire county, but we also have to focus primarily on our districts. So when I think about what's the most important thing for the ARB district, the Dulles district, the southern part of the county, I have to start with transportation, because that's really where we've continued to have a crisis. I've been excited over the last eight years I've been on the board to no longer have the Dulles South area be the forgotten part of the county. I've helped deliver $736 million of infrastructure directly serving the people of the Dulles District, but we have a lot more to do. My big idea is to build a Route 50 Northern Collector Road connecting Tall Cedars Parkway and Route 50 to Route 28 at the Air and Space Interchange. I've moved this from just a concept into a piece of the countywide transportation plan, and over the last several weeks, I've been negotiating with the Metropolitan Airport's Authority to actually acquire the land to do it. When I put an idea out there, I follow through, I get it done. We have a lot of other roads underway as well, such as our Cola Boulevard, North Star Boulevard. I've been working with Fairfax County to help deal with Braddock Road. Those are the district issues, and of course, there are other district issues as well. For the county, I've had the pleasure of overseeing our Department of Economic Development for all eight years I've been on the board. I'm the chairman of our Finance, Economic Development, and Government Operations Committee. We have an incredible team here at Loudoun County Economic Development, but it wasn't always the case. When I was elected in 2011, we really weren't doing what we needed to do to attract commercial business development investment, and now we are. We have one of the top-performing agencies in the entire country. For the county, the next big thing is to develop the areas around our metro stations. And in order to do that, we're going to have to really start thinking outside the box. We're going to have to start looking at solutions like tax increment financing and other ways to really incentivize those projects. The reality is, what you can get per square foot for an office here is not necessarily what a developer can, so we have to be -- have some skin in the game and get those things done.
Hi. My name is Sri Nagaradi. I'm not a politician. I'm one of the residents frustrated the way the county is acting. So I came from the teacher's family. I know education is important, and the county and the country welcoming all the educators, they are the one adding the values today. So right now, the schools are not funded every year, taking special-needs kids and gifted and talented. Fairfax is having two times Montgomery special-needs kids. So my neighbors fought two years legally to stay the kids in the school, so that should not be the case. We need to give more options to the gifted and talented as well. We doesn't have full-day schools. And teachers need to be paid well, keep them in affordable housing for the first responders and servicemen. That's missing. The transportation. I live in Ashburn, used to travel to Rockwell for four years. Nothing changed. No bridges, no flyers. If you don't invest now, it is going to be too late. In education, in transportation, I'm the one of the frustrated traveler resident. That is the reason I'm running for the office. If you don't invest now, now, chill. I just want to stress, these are going to be the issues. Land use, buy-right development. People are building without putting any money contributing to the county, so we need to stop. And safety. Everybody is concerned kids are going to schools, they come back safe. We need to address, we need to pay attention. With that, I want to stand up, voice one of the residents. I want to be, you know, listening to the people, representing the people, not the builders and developers. Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm Kristin Umstadt, and it's been my honor to represent the Leesburg District on the Board of Supervisors. I would say the greatest district on the Board of Supervisors, though some of my colleagues might disagree a little. But what I find when I go door-to-door and talk to the folks in Leesburg, they are concerned about three major issues. One is transportation. What are we as a board doing to make sure that they don't spend too many hours commuting? Folks need to get home to their kids after school. They need to have a transportation system that works, and so it's been my great honor to work across the aisle with my colleagues on the board, both Democrats and Republicans, to make sure that Leesburg and the rest of the county is getting the kind of funding for transportation it needs. We've succeeded in getting funding for the Battlefield Parkway, Route 7 interchange. We've succeeded in getting funding for Route 15 North to move that hour-long, two-hour-long, three-hour-long backlog out of Leesburg, get it out of the town so that our folks in Leesburg can get home. We've worked hard on school funding, and as the chair said, the last board underfunded the schools by about $95 million. We have managed to nearly, not quite, but nearly fully fund the schools, and we need to keep working in that direction. Finally, growth. When I vote on a rezoning or special exception, I think, how is this going to impact my residents and the rest of the county? If it is going to overcrowd our roads and schools, you will generally find that I am a no vote. I am so privileged to be here. Thank you to the League and its member organizations for hosting this, and really, God bless you and have a wonderful evening.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Mike Turner. I'm running for Ashburn District Supervisor. For those of you who live in Ashburn, it's good to see you again. I'm absolutely certain I've knocked on your door at this point. I graduated from the Air Force Academy in 1973 and served for 24 years in the U.S. Air Force, and then left the Air Force in 1997 and went to work for the nonprofit community. I've worked for, at the senior national level, for six different nonprofit organizations. The one I work at right now supports military and veteran families. I run a 501(c)(3) foundation that supports military and veteran families, and our motto is never stop serving. And if you ask me why I'm running for Ashburn District Supervisor, that's the answer. It's pretty straightforward. A number-one issue facing the county right now, I spent two years on the Stakeholders' Committee developing the draft 2019 comprehensive plan. That made its way through the system and was ultimately approved by the Board of Supervisors, but that's a hat-trick of need for the county. First, we have the vision of the 2019 comprehensive plan. The next leg of the three-legged stool, if you'll ever mix metaphors, is the unmet housing needs strategic plan, which we urgently need to complete and incorporate as a supplement document to the comprehensive plan. And then the third leg of the stool is a very complex zoning ordinance. The comprehensive plan is the science, but the zoning ordinance is the engineering. The science defines the vision that we want to try and achieve, but the zoning ordinance actually says this is the mechanism on the ground of how we're going to achieve it as quickly and as fairly and as equitably as possible. That's why I'm in this race. I think that is going to consume the board for at least the next year, and I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Karan Sains. I'm the current Sterling District Supervisor on the Loudoun County Board of Supervisors, running again for another four years. The main reason why I decided to run again was because we cannot afford to have somebody who's in office who's not had the experience to bring to the table to make sure Sterling continue to move Sterling forward. Sterling cannot afford to go backward or stay stagnant when you continue moving forward, and we've just done that these last four years by getting $7.8 million allocated for a new W and O D Trail Crossing Bridge at Sterling Boulevard that we've been talking about for decades. And then we finally, within my first four years, we've gotten the funding for that. We've got funding for new sidewalks. Believe it or not, Sterling is one of the oldest communities in Loudoun County, but there's still a lot of missing links and non-connectivity in Sterling area. So we got funding for a lot of sidewalk projects. We're going to be having some sidewalks and crosswalks put in on Route 7 coming up in the next couple of years, so I want to continue to fight to push those projects forward faster, get them done, because we have a lot of people walking to and from to the Nova Community College, to and from to their jobs, to and from to their houses, and they need to have a safe way to walk and get back and forth, especially, you know, imagining somebody crossing Route 7 without a crosswalk or walking along Route 7 on a dirt trail and not on the sidewalk. That's what's currently happening right now. So those are the reasons why I'm running for office. Some of the major issues that are coming forward, again, I'm going to start district-specific first and then go to the county overall, is we need to do some reinvestment redevelopment in Sterling community. That's why I fought to have Sterling identify as Opportunity Zone to make sure we can get some people in there to reinvest, redevelop in our area, so we can make it anew again, put a new fresh coat of paint on, so we can have some of the new nice things compared to other areas in the county. Now, when it comes to the county, it's been mentioned before, we had the comprehensive plan, which we got done this year, and now we're going to have the big, big opportunity, big tackle, the zoning, which is, again, you need somebody who has experience, understands the different zoning rules and regulations, because we're going to be, that's a big lift that we're going to be going through here in the next couple of years, so thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. Now, just a reminder, the questions from here on out will be one-minute answers, and they're doing a great job with the timer, so as soon as you hear that, please stop talking or we'll jump in. These questions that we're going to go to next are going to be related to planning and zoning. Do you believe the county government should implement new land preservation programs like transfer of development rights and purchase of development rights, revise zoning rules, and/or devote public resources to slow the pace of development in Loudoun rural areas? If so, please identify any specific programs that you would prioritize. And we'll start on the right side, and we'll go all the way across again.
Okay. I believe we need to take a all-above approach. Look at it, you know, with being in the East, you know, we definitely, I know a lot of people say, well, develop in the East, leave the West alone, but at the same time, there are certain places in the East that we do not want to see development for some of the pockets that are not developed or are all the way developed in the East. So we just need to look at it holistically to make sure it's a good plan that's going to help the West, and at the same time, make sure we're preserving the open spaces that we have in the East, because, again, we do not want to overdevelop in those certain areas, make sure we're developing in certain places in the East where we want to develop, say, in the urban areas, the metro station areas, you know, et cetera. So, again, I'm open to all different methods, but make sure it's a good plan that's going to help both areas achieve their goals.
I absolutely think the toolbox for land development and land use in Loudoun County needs to be chock-full of as many possible tools as we can. My opponent, Mick Staton, introduced a motion when he was on the board from 2004 to 2008 to double the density in AR-1 from one house per 10 acres to one house per five acres. As a result, a direct result of that action, we now have 11,000 homes in the buy-right development pipeline in AR-1 as a direct result of what he did. I think PDRs, TDRs, and conservation easements are excellent tools, and I think they ought to be on the table. Transfer of development rights, TDRs, are the only of those, ones of those three tools that don't cost the county any money. The challenge is, who's the sending area, who's the receiving area? I would love to explore the possibility. I've talked to some of my rural resident friends. They've said transfer TDRs are associated with the sending area in the rural, in the rural areas to commercial areas in the East, and that's interesting. That's a really interesting possibility. I'd love to explore that, but I want all the tools on the table to preserve the rural West.
Thank you.
I certainly have spoken in favor of the transferable development rights in the past and continue to support that, and I think as a board, we displayed overwhelming support for the making conservation easements a more accessible approach to preserving land in the West especially. On the purchase of development rights program, I absolutely believe the county could be a partner and help administer such a program. I would be a bit reluctant to use taxpayer dollars for that, but I think we can partner with the private sector and achieve the same goal, so that, those three, I think, are So that, those three, I think, are the three-legged stool of land use in the west.
Land use is very important. We need to preserve for the future needs. I want county to look into land pooling. We need to have, land need to be preserved for the use of the county, for the fire stations, schools, as well as other county needs. If you don't invest now, it's going to be too late, it's going to be too expensive. And planning and zoning need to be addressed. It should be separate department we need to start. I'm a civil engineer. I know how the planning and zoning impacts. So we need to act fast, and as Kristin said, TDRs, I'm up for it. But we need to look holistically, and we need to have the infrastructure to support, not by development. So planning and zoning is the critical piece of the use, and we have a mixed east and west. Thank you.
Western Loudoun is an asset for the east and the west, and I want to keep it that way. Loudoun does have fairly aggressive conservation easement programs. I think we can look more at that and look at better ways to do that and ways to expand that. I do have very specific concerns about the TDR program in particular. I hear a lot about how we're going to transfer rights from the west to the east, but nobody can ever tell me exactly where in the east they're going to go. If you believe in the Comprehensive Plan that we just passed, then you should not support that sort of program, because we just put the maximum best densities into the Comprehensive Plan that we believe those areas can fit. So if you're transferring something that goes above what's allowed in the Comprehensive Plan, which you would have to do, then it just simply doesn't make sense for those of us who represent those eastern districts. I have, I've already explored these things with the development community, and they tell me the only thing they're interested in are residential rights in the east and not around metro stations, because we've already given them those rights. So I have some real concerns about that type of program and the impact it would have to traffic schools and the overcrowding we already have in the eastern part of this county.
Tom Sam Croy is running for Catoctin Supervisor. And Mr. Leturno is right, TDRs don't work if the Board of Supervisors has already given all the density to developers that they want in the east. I'm running to keep rural Loudoun rural. As a farmer, community activist, and independent candidate, I know more about all these programs than any of my opponents and frankly, everybody up on this stage here. I will literally talk your ear off about it if you want to stick around afterwards. But I think that, like I said before, we are losing rural Loudoun with the status quo, but we need to be on the lookout for future threats that are coming. I don't know if anybody saw the Loudoun Now paper today, also another article in the Loudoun Times about a local developer, David Gregory, that basically had the bright idea to build condos in the rural area, and he thinks if he doesn't subdivide, he can build as many units as he wants to. He's tossing out campaign donations like Fourth of July, like it's the Fourth of July Parade. And I would like to see a show of hands of everybody that knows for sure that they haven't taken money from David Gregory.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Anybody else?
One of the things that hasn't been said yet is that this board has not approved one new home in western Loudoun County. Not a single new home has been approved by this board in western Loudoun County. Not one. With the homes you see going up are homes that are being built by right. So the question is, how do we discourage by-right development? And there's a couple of ways to do that. Conservation easement programs, TDR programs, PDR programs. But the one that we haven't talked about today yet is to help people find ways to monetize their land so they don't feel like they want to sell the land for houses. That really is the goal. People have a right to make money off their land, and if we don't help them make money off their land through agricultural uses, through equestrian uses, even wineries and breweries, then they will sell that land for homes. So the best way to not have housing in western Loudoun County is for the next board that I will lead to continue to not allow homes in Loudoun County, but also find ways to decrease by-right development by having people be able to monetize their land. Thank you.
I would not only be in favor of TDRs and PDRs and conservation easements that are currently being discussed, but on the October 9 Council of Loudoun Towns debate, I'm going to introduce a protection program that I've drafted for prime farmland after talking to Mr. Croy and Robert Carr and other farmers. If you're a lawyer and you asked the leading question, you focused the zoning on western Loudoun. How do you protect western Loudoun when there are people paying $2 million an acre in eastern Loudoun? If zoning makes the land so valuable in eastern Loudoun, it's a complete lie that western Loudoun will not be sold off for the same applications. You're not going to win that lawsuit in the court. And I think it's deceptive that we're not attacking the zoning that's giving so much value to the land in eastern Loudoun, and that's the way to protect western Loudoun, in my opinion.
Good evening. Now, I want to think about this for a moment with you. I've got two opponents to try to paint me as an outsider who doesn't understand what it's like to live in a rural community. But in fact, I live on a 20-acre farm on a gravel road in Waterford that my wife and I bought on choice. And, you know, we're currently the only, and I'm the only member of this race in Catoctin that actually owns, has purchased, lives on a farm. My next-door neighbor, Robert Carr, who was just mentioned, farms 300 acres of Bacangas beef. And he's the first person that told me, you know what? We can't save anything that's not worth anything. That's one of the reasons why I have learned that, the chair just said, we have to give the farmers an opportunity to monetize their land so that they have options at the end of their career. The DDR program is an excellent opportunity. My friend Kristin told me earlier that the eastern supervisors didn't want to approve it and put it in the comp plan because they didn't know what the receiving distance would be.
Thank you.
It's easy. They should go to the metro centers. That's where we need the additional density. That's where we send the density.
Thank you. Your time's up.
With, hello. I would say that in the broad-run area, we have the opportunity to have controlled growth. We have an opportunity where the metro stations that are being built to build homes. I understand that people do not want things being built in the western part of Loudoun because people love going to the wineries and breweries. They love the, you know, going to be able to go back for horseback riding and that sort of thing. So my, what I believe is that we should use those areas that we say that we are going to have as our urban areas for controlled growth and increase the density there so that we can build, like I said before, town homes. We can build condos for people who want to live in our area. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jim Bonfield, and I've lived in Loudoun County for 30 years with my wife, Terry. We have enjoyed all of Loudoun County. The equestrian, soccer, the open spaces in the west and the urban in the east. I'm very concerned about taking money, tax money, and buying development rights and trying to explain that to folks in broad run. I think that the conservation easements could be a very workable tool, has been in the past. Maybe there's some things that need to be done on that. The other thing are parks and, of course, equestrian area. Thank you.
Hi, Julie Briskman, running for Algonkin District. I've lived and worked in this county for almost 20 years, and I have watched us grow from 90,000 people to almost 400,000 people. I'm running because I think we should fully fund our schools, support working women, and more intelligently develop in the county. And by that, I mean not necessarily only arguing over where the TPA line is going to be or the rural line is going to be. We must consider the eastern side of the county. We must invest more in the eastern side of the county. And that means that we fund the Housing Trust Fund so that we can build, cooperate, and partner with the developers. That means that we have more flexible zoning, and that means that we don't, that we, sorry, work on the shopping centers in the eastern side as well. So I have roads, schools, and shopping centers on the eastern side of the county. I'm willing to consider a lot of tools to save the rural side of the county, absolutely. I love the rural side of the county. I think everyone should be able to make money off of their land, but the eastern side of the county needs investment.
All right. So this time, we're actually going to start with Jim, then we'll go all the way across, and then I'll come back to Julie, mix it up a little bit. If you are elected, what background, experience, expertise, and other qualifications will you be looking for in making your appointments to important zoning and planning positions, including the Planning Commission and the Zoning Ordinance Action Group, as well as the hiring of the Planning Commissioner?
Thank you for that question. For the broad-run planning and other appointments in that area, I would like the person to reflect many of my values and vision, which would be to, as we were just talking about, to help protect the west, but yet develop around the east. The broad-run district has a lot of density that's being pushed onto it, and of course, maybe can handle it with the transportation of the metro system. But we also need the roads and building roads that are parallel to the Greenway, and some more north-south roads are very important in crossing the broad run. Transportation is a big issue, and they'll have to reflect those thoughts. Thank you.
Can you give, can you?
Sure.
Give me the answer question again.
Yes. Not the answer.
Not the answer question.
If you are elected, what background, experience, expertise, and other qualifications will you be looking for in making your appointments to important zoning and planning positions, including the Planning Commission and Zoning Ordinance Action Group, as well as the hiring of the Planning Commissioner?
I would look for someone who is flexible in the things that need to be done in our district. I need someone that is willing to work with the developers and planning professionals. They need to have that background and knowledge of what is going on in our county and able to make those changes that we need for our county, for our district. Thank you.
In making those selections, I would place a high priority on choosing individuals who actually live in western Loudoun, who understand the rural way of life, and who see the world the same way that we do. I think that's important. But at the same time, professionally, I want those people to have a background in planning and in working with developers, or maybe even having worked in the development community, because it's important to know how to hold those developers accountable. All day at work, my job is to hold developers accountable, tell them where they can, where they cannot, and exactly what they can build. So not having any experience in dealing with developers is not an attribute that we need anywhere near our board. We need people who know how to deal with those very insatiable, sometimes insatiable animals and know how to keep them in their place. And I want people to help me do that.
Given that I have an engineering background, a financial background, and a legal background, and I expect to do this job full-time, and I can be convincing that I have the time to do it full-time, unlike one of my opponents, I believe that anybody that I would hire for anything has to have a clear understanding of how to define problems clearly, transparently, and move toward a solution, proving why they're moving forward, for the reasons of causality, not for political reasons, not for, because somebody's, their friend, their neighbor. Everything has to be above-board and transparent, and I'm going to get into details. It's how I live, that's what makes this job fun. It's what I did in the school board. That's why I chaperoned kids to China, added Mandarin to the school system, and attended every meeting. Every meeting. So that's how I view things. That's how I get involved. No, no, the, there's no party favorites, not on my, not on my watch.
Well, obviously, the first thing you look for is somebody who's well-qualified for the job that you're putting them up for, and you go through a pretty extensive application process like I did last time. But you also look for diversity. Loudoun is a very diverse county. When I came on this board, the Historic Review Committee had never had a woman of color on it. Think about that in Loudoun County. Historic Review Committee would never have a woman of color. When I came on this board, there had not been a person of color in the EDA. I put an investment banker on the EDA who is well-qualified, but also happens to be a person of color. I put Cannon Swinney-Boston on the FIC Committee, the FIT Committee. It is amazing to me that we believe, and we seem to have thought, that expertise and subject matter experts only came, only look like one demographic in Loudoun County. So I want the people who lead the county to look like the county they're leading. I will first look for expertise, I will also look for diversity, and I will look for people who are willing to do the job, put their time, effort, and heart into the job they're going to do. Thank you so much.
I'm Sam Croy. I'm running for Catoctin Supervisor, and like I said, I'm running to keep rural Loudoun rural. I really can't believe that, I just heard my Democratic opponent, the gentleman down there, say that he is going to put developers on all the county boards that he has, that it's his role to make appointments for. Running for Catoctin Supervisor, the overwhelming majority opinion of residents in the Catoctin District is to keep rural Loudoun rural. And because that's the majority opinion, that's what I'm used to, all the candidates saying all the time. So I have to really point out how I'm different. Like, I'm a farmer, and now since I've been running and had some success, all of a sudden, the other two candidates are talking about how they have farms and they're farmers too. But I just want to point out that I'm not taking any developer donations. Both my opponents are taken in by the tens of thousands, and the one group I'm not going to put on any boards is any developers. Thanks.
Well, I'm not a farmer or a developer. No, I've been very fortunate to have some wonderful folks who have worked and represented the Dulles District over the last eight years that I've appointed. I've had the current chair of the Parks and Rec Board as a Dulles District appointee. Speaking specifically about the Planning Commission, I would reappoint my Planning Commissioner, Jeff Salmon. Jeff was the president of the South Rattan Proprietary, 25,000 residents, just in one HOA, not bad. And he's done a great job for me for the last eight years. And the interesting thing is, Jeff and I don't always agree. I think my colleagues that are with me on the board would say I don't always vote the same way, but we talk every week, we sometimes argue every week, and that's what I want. I want to be challenged. I want to be exposed to different ideas and viewpoints. I want somebody's different perspective. And that's what I get from him. I want people who are going to be candid with me, free of conflict, hard-working, diligent. Jeff is all those things. As far as ZOAG is concerned, free of conflict, but also with expertise.
I'm going to appoint the people who is going to have the time, passion, vision, commitment, and qualified, and who can bring the diversity. I've been a member in Transport Advisory Board at large. I know the needs of the county. Every day, 33 people are moving into the county. I'm also a commissioner for the state Census 2020. So the new census is going to show the amount of people moving into the county. So we need to address those big challenges coming in. So the people who we appoint need to be transparent and committed and qualified. So I'm going to support them, and I'm going to, I know like how important, people doesn't have the time to spend on the boards, but it's very critical. We need to make sure we have the right people to listen to the needs of the residents. Thank you.
I'm very fortunate to have two people on, one on Planning Commission, the other on the Zoning Ordinance Advisory Group, who I think represent the best of this county. Neither one is affiliated with the development industry. And before I say, well, that's important, I want to say, most developers I run into are very charming people and great friends. But we can't have planning commissioners and members of ZOAG who will go along with what the development industry wants. And so I will be looking to reappoint my Planning Commissioner, who has no problem saying no to developers, and my person on ZOAG, who is one of the leaders of the conservation and environmental movement in the county. Thank you.
One of the benefits of being on the Stakeholders' Committee was that I got to talk and work with, for two years, 26 citizens. And I had some friends who were developers and planners and conservationists, and I asked them, what kind of a Planning Commissioner do I want? And they said, oh, you absolutely must have somebody with planning and development experience. And I talked to some other friends of mine on the same committee who are conservationists and developers and planners and said, what kind of Planning Commission do I want? And they said, you absolutely cannot have somebody with development and land use planning experience. So I'm in the middle, and I finally decided I need somebody, frankly, that mirrors my values. My values are mission accomplishment. That's my military background, that's my nonprofit background. What are we trying to achieve? I want somebody who can think fast, who can... I want somebody who can think fast, who can rationally arrive at a decision, that has a path forward, doesn't have an agenda, and is not afraid to speak truth to power. That's the kind of qualities I want to see in a Planning Commissioner. We'll work out the details later.
Well, I'll be reappointing my current Planning Commissioner once we are re-elected on November 5th. My current Planning Commissioner is not a developer, is not, you know, has never been a developer, you know, has his own private business, a small business, doing pretty well, lives in Sterling, and was actually pretty shocked when I picked him to be my Planning Commissioner. He went through the certification process, got certified during these last four years. So he's experienced, and, you know, to be honest with you, we disagreed a couple of times on a couple of different applications, which is fine. You know, I'm human resources professional by trade, so I always take the appointments to the ZOAGs, to the Planning Commissioner, to the different commissions that we have very seriously, so I always ask somebody to send me their resume, actually sit down with them, do an actual full-blown interview before making a final decision on anybody. So I'll go through that process again for all the appointments that we get to do for the board term. But we definitely need, I always like to have somebody that's seasoned, now that the person's in there for four years and has done a pretty good job, so I'll reappoint that person. Thank you.
When I look over some of the committees and the appointments that my supervisor predecessor has appointed to the committees, I am not really happy with those, so it's safe to say that many of those, if not all, are going to be replaced. The qualifications I will look for is someone who hopefully has experience and passion, and perhaps has lived in the county for a while. But I also want someone who's willing to look outside the county for solutions. We cannot be the only county in the entire nation that's gone through this type of growth, and there's all kinds of resources out there. There's the International City-City Management Association, there's the Association of Counties. So I want someone who's willing to go and learn about things that other counties have done, and reach out to places that have these resources for us, because we're not alone in this. So there's got to be people that can share ideas and solutions.
All right, well, that was pretty intense, so maybe we can lighten things up a little bit, and we're going to turn our attention to public safety.
Oh, well, yeah, that'll do it.
We'll start with you this time, Mike. What criminal justice policy changes or improvements would you support in our county? For example, greater enforcement in policing, bias, de-escalation training for police officers?
I'm sorry, can you stop?
What criminal justice policy changes or improvements would you support in our county? For example, greater enforcement in policing, bias, and de-escalation training for police, just to name a few.
All of those things. Public safety concerns, I think the paramount obligation of any public servant has to do with public safety. I would like to see a veterans' court implemented immediately in Loudoun County. It's very successful, it's been tried all across the country, and I think it's long overdue. We've got 135,000 veterans in Loudoun County, and military families, and I think a veterans' court is long overdue. Public safety, let's just get it out there. We need to move the firing line, or whatever we're calling it these days. We've had nine, seven or eight citizens that have been shot in this county. We need to move that line out to deal with the encroachment and the transition policy area that is endangering our citizens. The fact that, frankly, the Republican members of the current board simply sat on any change in that policy, and that we still have, we had a woman grazed the other day, we need to fix that as our preeminent public safety concern first. Which way?
This way. Thanks.
I would echo some of what Mike just said. One of the big public safety dilemmas we have now is trying to stop the reckless discharge of firearms in casual backyard shooting ranges. Folks are not taking proper measures to make sure there are backstops, berms, and other methods of making sure that the rounds do not leave their property. And Mike is right, we had a woman grazed. This all started many, many years ago, but certainly last year, we had three homes at least in Willisburg, which were hit by rounds from a backyard shooting range. T-Luck, the Transportation Land Use Committee, has been looking at the issue and has sent it back to the board. I'm hoping the board will take action to increase safety out, especially in the rural areas. But I would support expanding the no-shoot zone around homes, as well as moving the line at least to Route 15. Thank you.
Public safety is important, so we need to keep the schools and communities safe. And backyard shooting, my opponent doesn't say any comments happened in Willisburg as well as in the Leesburg. So we need to stop these, and we need to bring common sense gun laws to the state as well as the county. And we need to make sure our public servants are, like, we met the needs. We are behind like 10 to 15 years on the safety of the, like, you take bus responders, our fire stations, our police stations, so we need to make sure we are investing and supporting them. So I just want to make sure safety is the highest priority, and we want to keep the homes, schools are safe. The kids going, parents are worried they're going to come back, safe or not. So we need to invest in mental health. We need to make sure people's mental health, we want to invest and approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let me correct the record, Mr. Turner. Not all Republican members of the board were opposed to taking action. Thank you. The reason why the T-Luck was even able to take this issue up was because myself and Mr. Meyer cross-party lines to move forward on that issue. And in fact, I did have quite a bit to say following the incidents in Willisburg and Leesburg, and actually put some of my own ideas on the table, some of which are moving forward in the area of target shooting in practice. This is not about guns, this is not a partisan issue, it's just about common sense, and that's how we have to approach it. More broadly, on public safety, there's a lot of conversation about school safety, which is important. We also need to make sure we have enough folks out on the street. If one of the proposals that's out there is to put an SRO in every single elementary school, if we did that, we would have more school resource officers sitting in elementary schools than we actually have on patrol in Loudoun County during the daytime. That doesn't make any sense to me. So let's take a look at those models, let's work with the sheriff, if we have a sheriff's department, let's work with the sheriff, and let's try to find a way to find a right balance there between school safety and patrol deputies.
I'm Sam Croyz. I'm running for Catocton Supervisor, and safety is my number-one priority on so many topics: transportation, schools, police and fire, guns, obviously, and a lot of these things come down to cost. The driving force behind so many, behind our huge budget and so many of our costs is the number of houses. We are adding houses so fast, we can't keep up in so many ways, and are suffering the consequences. So I want to tackle that, and that's going to be a long-term, a long-term job. In the meantime, I'm not going to nickel-and-dime on the budget and drop the tax rate at the cost of our schools, and definitely not school safety. For instance, you talk about entryways and all that kind of stuff. If that's going to keep our kids safe, we need to build those tomorrow. And people keep asking me, "Do I believe in the Second Amendment?" And my answer is, well, the Supreme Court does, and I don't want to violate state law or federal law.
Would you please repeat the question?
What criminal justice policy changes or improvements would you support in our county? For example, greater enforcement in policing, bias, and de-escalation training for police, just to name a few.
Thank you. Well, the first thing is, I was really very happy to lead the effort to start a drug court in Loudoun County. A drug court is very important, because we should not be criminalizing the disease of substance dependence. In addition, we have now put substance abuse and other types of mental health treatment in the jails, and we have a much stronger re-entry program. But you all should all know this, it does not matter who wins that sheriff's seat, I will be looking to put a police chief in charge. Loudoun County is a large, and growing, and diverse, and dynamic county, and it should never be at this point that our law enforcement should be political. It's not a hit on anyone doing the job, but law enforcement should never, ever be a political decision. The fact that we have someone on either party, running on a party platform for law enforcement is just wrong. It is time for us to have a professional police department and police chief in Loudoun County, and I will put that forward no matter who wins that office.
In the last election, I ran for Commonwealth Attorney and received 25,000 votes countywide, more than the chair did, actually. So I need more than a minute to talk about policing activities. I made the motion on the school board to put in panic buttons in all the schools. I made the motion, which was approved, to upgrade all the cameras in the school system after the broad-run debacle where a brick, a white brick was thought to be C4. I was the only board member, I was a board member on the Loudoun County Crime Commission, so I put my time where my interest was. I've discussed the ability for Mike Chapman to use an algorithm to have his deputies that travel around the county to deliberately route themselves near schools so we have a faster response time. Having SROs in elementary schools doing nothing all day makes no sense, and I'm sorry John recommended it. We need responsiveness to an event. Walkers need to be protected, as well as the vestibules.
Thank you, your time is up.
I find it very interesting, with less than 35 days left in this race, that I have two opponents that spend most of their time, all of their time as a matter of fact, rehashing and telling us what the problems are. What, here's what's wrong with what's going on in western Loudoun or in Loudoun County. Where are your solutions? For example, one of the reasons I want to build workforce housing, because it'd be very important for our police officers, sheriff's deputies, and soon police officers, and our firefighters, to live in the community where they serve. Do you want to have to wait on someone to come from West Virginia when your house is on fire? No, they need a place to live. So I think that instead of worrying about, "Who gave me money?", they're all affordable housing developers, or builders, or they build hotels. None of them want to subdivide anybody's farm. They want to build around the metros, because our teachers, our firemen, and our firefighters and police officers need someplace to live so they can be among us.
I believe we need to diversify our public officers with more women and minorities protecting our communities. I believe that when children see people who reflect themselves, they have a better outlook of what's going on, that they are not scared or frightened, or thinking that something's going to happen to them because they see someone that they deem a person who is, that they're afraid of because of what they have learned of, let's just say it, of a white male with little brown boys. So that's what I believe. We also need to, community policing where we have officers on the street with our neighbors, so that the officers that are there are a part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jim Bonfils. America has a serious gun violence issue, along with serious mental health issues. This includes a high rate of gun-related suicide by young people and at-risk adults. We're not immune to this in Loudoun County. Public safety and mental health must be a priority for the next board, and I'm committed to looking at all possible ways that government can help. That's one reason I was involved in supporting the SROs, increasing the number in schools, maybe not to the full, to every school, but increasing the numbers. We need to do more to keep our kids safe. I was involved in a program here to bring kids safe and background checks to soccer coaches and to protect our players, and that's very important. And I fully support, by the way, to prosecute any of those who discharge firearms unsafely and around homes. It's unacceptable. Thank you.
Julie Briskman, Algonkin District. I think we need to change our ordinances so that we require backstops and an extension of the shooting zones, so that we can stop this reckless firearms accidents happening in the county. I don't think necessarily that we should be hardening our schools, and I'm against the idea of putting more resource officers in our elementary schools. One really big thing that we can do, I agree with professionalizing and having a police department, I also think that we should look at professionalizing our fire system and our first responder system. Lastly, I think that we should support our legislators in Richmond. And we can do two things. We can support red flag laws in our legislative agenda, and we can also support universal background checks in our legislative agenda. Is that all?
I'll say with respect to the question, those are good ideas. We can propose those on the Board of Supervisors, but if the sheriff doesn't want to implement them, then they don't get done. So that goes, the reason why I say that is, that goes to the point that Chair Randall just mentioned about looking at having a police department. The police department reports to us, so we can give initiative, and then that police chief will implement that initiative. Where the sheriff, there's a difference. The sheriff is elected by the citizens, and the sheriff can implement whatever he or she wants to do. We can give suggestions, but if the sheriff doesn't want to do it, they'll come in front of him and say, "No, we don't want to do it," and then they'll, they won't do it. For example, we had the idea of collecting, having our inmates do a work program to go collect trash, mow the yards, and the medians. The sheriff's department came out here, and they said, "No, we are not in favor of that." So guess what? We're not doing that currently right now. So that's the difference between having a sheriff's department and a police department. So thank you.
Thank you. So the next question, we're going to start back down on this end, and it will be with Sylvia first, so if you... All right, the next two questions are on the topic of education. I'll go ahead and read the question while the mic's coming to you. The current board has been criticized for raising teacher salaries. Do you think the current teacher salary structure is adequate for Loudoun County, or does it need to be adjusted in some way?
You're asking a special education teacher if we should increase the pay. We have teachers that live outside of the county, cannot afford to live here. I have a friend of mine who's deciding on whether she's going to be able to stay here. She's a single mom, living in an apartment, but she has, her pay has been increased just slightly, and now she is afraid that she will not be able to live in her apartment because now she makes too much money. We have to do something about that. We have to make sure that we pay our teachers a fair wage. Or we are going to send these experienced teachers to other counties where they can make a better pay.
One of the best kindergarten teachers in Loudoun County was a woman named Miss C at Waterford Elementary, and she's just notoriously good, and all the children loved her. But two years ago, even though there was a raise in pay, she found that she could not afford to live in the county, and so we lost her to a different county. So I think it's the same thing. We have to make it affordable for our people to live here. So yes, of course, the teachers deserve a pay increase. They're the most valuable service providers we have, they have our children. But we have to make the housing affordable for them. That's why I'm a big proponent of having workforce-level housing around the metros so our teachers and our firemen and policemen have someplace to live in our community. I love it when I see my daughter's teacher at Costco. Now, I'm going to pass the mic down the road, and I want to make sure this time, when the mic gets to you, Sam, no more problems. Give us at least one solution before the end of this night, just one solution from you, please.
School system, I have lots of solutions. Eight years, eight years I represented the broad-run community, and I was very proud. I never missed one email, response, or phone call, no matter where it came from. There are some problems in the salary structure, in the way it progresses. While I was on a school board, I actually proposed that we provide, we, the school system, provide intellectual property support for teachers that actually use their lesson plans to replace textbooks, which cost 300 bucks apiece. It was denied by the school board members to move forward and force Dr. Hatrick to do it. It's not that I don't want teachers to be on the salary scale, I want the best teachers to have additional opportunities to earn income when they're motivated to save money for the school system and the county where we live. All three of my children graduated from Broadrun High School. I chaperoned children going to China on my own money, my wife chaperoned kids to France... My wife chaperoned kids to France. The target pay should be the focal point. You can't pay somebody 47,000 and somebody else 107,000 and consider it fair.
Okay, thank you, your time is up.
Be fair. Pay the target pay of 70,000 to beginners.
Okay, once more, I'm going to ask you to repeat the question.
Sure. "The current board has been criticized for raising teacher salaries. Do you think the current teacher salary structure is adequate for Loudoun County or needs to be adjusted in some way?"
The Board of Supervisors does not pay the teachers. We don't set the salary for our teachers and the Board of Supervisors. So the question actually doesn't apply to us as far as being criticized. What we do is fund the school system, and then the school board decides what pay should or should not be paid. I have voted to adequately fund the school system year over year over year, and that's why I'm so proud to be the teacher recommended, the educator recommended person for this position. I will say a couple of things as I said before. When we came to this board, our teacher pay was lagging. Today, our teacher starting salary is the highest salary in Virginia. We do need to do things like helping them have obtainable housing to hope that they can live here, but we do not set the teacher's salary, and so the question itself is probably a question better directed to the school board. The last thing I will say, though, is I think teachers should be treated like athletes and paid like rock stars.
Please refrain from clapping.
Thanks. I'm Sam Crowe, I'm running for Catoctin Supervisor, and the problem that I see is retention of teachers, police and fire and all other county employees, and the solution is to pay them a fair wage so that we don't lose them to neighboring districts. We are spending so much money to train these folks, and then we're losing them, and we have so many empty positions that it's costing us more long-term than just to pay them a fair wage in the first place. Now, it's interesting, with as much government experience as my Democratic opponent, the gentleman down to my right, has the things that he doesn't understand. For instance, when you call the police, the police that are on duty are in the county already. They're not, they're on patrol, they're not responding from home. Another thing he doesn't understand is that when you build affordable housing, a lot of people want to move into that housing, not just police and teachers and firefighters. So I would really wish we could stop bringing them up all the time. I have too much respect to be using them all the time as talking points. Talk to me when you actually want to restrict the housing to employees that work here. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I would echo what Chair Randall said about the roles of the board. I would also add that in two campaigns, I have been criticized for a lot of things, but giving teachers raises has never been one of them. I don't know who out there is criticizing the Board of Supervisors or the school board for that. I would suggest that they maybe look in the mirror if they are. But in any event, the good news is about 70% of Loudoun teachers actually do live in Loudoun, and also that more teachers are actually coming from Fairfax County and moving to Loudoun school system than the other way around, and that's been true for several years. So that's good news. Doesn't mean we can rest on our laurels. I've been so passionate about economic development precisely because it provides the revenue streams that I know we need, so it's not entirely dependent on residential development to fund things like our school system. The school board will deal with the nitty-gritty of the exact pay scale. There's nothing the Board of Supervisors can do about that. I know they have made a lot of progress, and I know it's been targeted at certain areas where there's a lag. That's right. And so we should continue to fund that the best that we can, and we should continue to make sure we have the revenue sources coming to the county so that we can fund it.
I echo with Chair Randall, as I want to fund the schools every year. Right now, it's not happening. Only election year, they're funding the schools, so school board can pay well and make the decisions on the teachers. So education is the priority. I think most of us, we need to invest and keep the teachers. It's not just the pay. We need to treat them well, respect them, and we need to train them and retain in our county. I know like a lot of people moving out of Loudoun County to Fairfax, better pay. So still, we are underpaid in Loudoun County, I feel. So we need to compare with other counties. It's not the best schools we build, we need the best teachers. It doesn't matter how best is it, like technology at the school. The teachers are important. We need to identify and invest and pay well them. It's not the IT. Teacher is the best. So you remember, like my daughter, kids went to like public schools, they still feel the teachers are the best, so they can change each life one at a time. Thank you.
A number of years ago, there was a book on the relative pay that teachers in Japan received versus teachers in the US, and the Japanese teachers were paid at the level of corporate executives in Japan. They were highly respected, and I think that, I like the Chair's rock star analogy, but I really do think we need to look at significant increases in teacher pay and respect. Right now, we've, the school board's done a pretty good job raising the incoming new teacher pay, but we still have that lag at about 10 years for teachers who have a master's degree who are not, not up to the regional standard. We need to work with our colleagues on the school board and tell them we will support funding to allow them to raise that pay.
My campaign slogan is protect, connect and select. I won't go in connect and select. Let's talk about protect for just a second. My obligation as the Ashburn Supervisor is to protect the quality of life and the gains in quality of life we've made in Ashburn. Our transportation system in Ashburn finally works. Well, let's talk about education. It occurs to me as I'm listening to these answers, and I'm as guilty as everybody, we're fighting hard to get to where we fund our schools at 100% of our surrounding neighbors. Well, we're setting our sights way, way too low. I want teachers in the country to fight to come to Loudoun County to teach our kids. That means we have to fill the middle gap as Supervisor Umstott just talked about. But it means I'm going to teach a class a month at my three high schools, Broad Run, Stonebridge and Riverside. I'm going to do this job full-time. I'm in a position where I can do that, but I'm going to be a fierce protector of our family's quality of life, and that means the future of our children in our schools, and that means creating a world-class education system in Ashburn, just not one as good as our surrounding neighbors.
Everybody pretty much said, yes, we're in agreement to making sure our teachers get a good wage, better pay, fair wage so that they can live in Loudoun County, et cetera. But we need to ask ourselves the question, how are we going to pay for it? And when that question always comes up, nine out of 10 times, people say, "Well, we'll figure it out." But then when you talk about taxes and the tax rate, what does everybody say? "Oh, I want my taxes low," et cetera, et cetera. We pay for services by our sheriff's department, by our firefighters, by our teachers, by the income that brings, that comes into the county from our taxes, from our taxes, from our businesses, and et cetera, that's in the county. But if we keep lowering the taxes, then we don't have enough money to do all these extra things that we always talk about doing. So for example, you know, the teacher housing. You know, if you have two teachers that are dating and then they get married and you take their income, it goes past the threshold. So how do we raise the threshold up? Again, it's by having the more money coming in, which is by, you know, taxes. So it's old saying, taxation plays for civilization.
Yes, of course, we should pay our teachers more. When you look at inflation, our teachers have actually suffered pay cuts year over year, and they suffer $184,000 pay gap if they stay in Loudoun County for their career versus a jurisdiction nearby. 70% of our teachers do live in the county, but that's mostly because it's a second income for them. I met a realtor who has a daughter who is actually started a foundation to help first-year teachers be able to live in the county. We need actually to work on retention as well, and the east side of the county suffers from that greatly. I also, I'm a scout mom, and I, there's two teachers in our troop. One teaches in Fairfax and one teaches in Loudoun. And the other day, they were talking about the, you know, the pay in this county, and the Fairfax teacher said, "Boy, I look every single year to see if I can teach where I live, and I would take a $10,000 pay cut if I had to do that." The school board does decide the rates of the teachers. However, it's really hard for them to pay the teachers what they're deserved if we don't fund the budget.
Jim Bonfils, Broad Run Supervisor. I have supported the school and county employee income study that was recently completed, and I support the implementation of that plan. Pay and benefits need to be more than competitive to retain world-class teachers and world-class employees for our county, and I very firmly believe that. And I believe that's one reason why the Loudoun Education Association designated me as educator recommended. Thank you.
I lost track of who's supposed to start the next round of questions. I think it's Kristen. Is that right? Okay. "Do you believe the county should act to keep open small community schools, and could you explain why or why not?" Yes, yes. "Do you believe the county should act to keep open small community schools, and could you explain why or why not?"
This issue comes up, I think, every four years, and then again every year in between when the school board is trying to figure out how to meet its budgetary restraints. Yes, I believe that our small communities benefit greatly, and our county benefits greatly from the small community schools. But I think, as my colleague Forrest will point out, even our small schools now are being overcrowded because we've had more growth than we can, we can handle. We don't have the schools to handle all the additional kids. But yes, I am not an advocate for shutting down our small schools, and I will continue to support funding for them.
Yeah, community schools is a good idea. I came from a teacher's family, I understand the education, how important it is, and it's smaller, like eastern Loudoun is more dense area, so it's overcrowded right now. I was talking to one of the resident, they said like the kindergarten, there was 27 kids in the class. It was supposed to be 18 or 19. How overcrowded. If you go west, it's very few, and they have like, some of the schools are there closing or like consolidating. So we need to make an approach. What's the best needs of the community? Based on that, the county need to make a decision. I'm for the education, so any needs from the smaller communities we can help, or the homeschooling, or the diverse communities who is not sending the kids to these schools, we make sure everybody get the education they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say off the top, if you listen to the discussion up here, you would never know that the school system actually is returning money to the Board of Supervisors, surplus money, on a fairly regular basis. So the discussion is not just whether we fund things, it's also on the other side, how they're spent. And that is not our decision, but it's part of the equation. Similarly, it's also not our decision whether community schools, small schools in the west are open or closed. I will say that I struggle sometimes when I have schools in the Dulles District with 1,000, 1,100, even up to 1,300 kids in elementary school, and there are schools in the west that can barely even fill half-capacity. So I think that that discussion needs to be, needs to happen on a case-by-case basis. There are some creative ways to utilize those facilities such as charter schools or tax magnet schools, art schools, those kinds of things that I'd like to see the school board explore. But we have to make sure that we're taking care of the needs for the entire county, and we haven't done as great a job at that. However, I've worked hard to accelerate all the schools that we can in the east and get them up to speed so we don't have the overcrowding, and I think we're just about there.
I'm Sam Crowe, running for Catoctin Supervisor, and I absolutely want to protect the small schools, and I also want to protect the towns and villages in the rural area. It is one of the most frustrating things as a supervisor that you don't have any control over how the money for schools is spent, but I'm going to do everything I can to protect the small schools and also to have equity in all the schools in the county. There was just an article in the Washington Post about Montgomery County and the schools and their agricultural reserve being neglected in favor of the schools in the eastern part of the county, and I want to keep rural Loudoun, rural, but I don't want our schools to fall behind. The thing with the small schools is that they're so much more than just schools, they're the centers of communities out in rural Loudoun, and it's hard to take that into account as a supervisor, but I would like to possibly explore the cost of making them community centers that we could see how much sense it really makes to just keep them open as schools. Thanks.
The wonderful thing about Loudoun County, one of the many wonderful things, is we have these different policy areas. Right now, we have the suburban policy area, transition policy area, and the rural policy area. We will soon have an urban policy area. That means when you move to Loudoun County, you can choose where you want to live and how you want to live. And if you want your child to go to an urban school setting, you can do that. If you want your child to go to suburban school, you can do that. But if you choose for your child to go to a rural school, you make that choice when you move to rural Loudoun County. You know what you're getting. And so Mr. LaTerno is correct, that is not our choice. The supervisors don't decide that. But I have, I will say that when the decision is made, one thing we will do is talk to our school board counterparts and let them know where we stand and where our constituents who are speaking to us stand. Anyone who wants to move to Loudoun County has a vast array of where they want to live and what types of schools their kids should go in, can go to. The school board has that choice, but I support the small schools remaining open.
I don't like the term "small schools" because they're strategically located. That's why they're important, that's why they should not be eliminated. One of the difficulties when I was a school board representative for Broad Run Community is our schools had, you know, 900 incredible numbers of children, and it was more efficient. But it was more efficient because the school system allows teachers to transfer when there's new schools. So places like Algonkin and Sterling end up having the youngest teachers, lack of mentoring, and the more mature teachers, the ones who've been teaching 20, 30 years, tend to move west, and that makes the small schools seem more expensive, but it's a strategically located school. The last thing on schools, the Board of Supervisors has the absolute right to influence the school board. It's pandering to say to the parents, "Oh, we just give you the money, the school board takes care of it." 22 dot 1 dash 79 requires the school system be utmost efficient. The buses should be efficient. The Board of Supervisors should have something to say about, "We'd like to see the buses be efficient." There's a number of other things that they should say, not just abscond from being responsible.
You know, I am the only candidate in the Catoctin race, or probably any race for that matter, that actually has children in one of the small western schools. And so maybe that's why I have an acute understanding that in the west, the school is more than just an educational facility. It is the center of our culture, and I think it's entirely rich for one of the, my friend Mr. LaTerno down here, to reference the fact that the supervisors don't control the school budget, because the development in the west has been allowed is one of the reasons why Lucas Elementary had been promised a new school that somehow in 11th hour ended up in the Dulles District. And so that's one of the things we want to point out. I would do, and even though they don't fund the schools directly, that they approve the school budget, one of my concepts that I have floated is I will begin an antenna program to leverage the rooftops of all the schools in the west to create a funding stream so that we can modernize our schools on our own without impacting the tax budget. That is an innovative way that a supervisor can affect change and bring a solution to a problem that everyone in the west enjoys.
I would, I would say that I would agree that small schools would stay open. I think the community has, should be the ones to make that choice on whether they want the school to be open or closed. But as, as we've heard before, the small schools, that they are important in those communities and, and they are needed.
Hello, I'm Jim Bonfils, and I'm for the Broad Run Supervisor. In Broad Run, the schools are at the center of our community. Scouts, all kinds of things, activities, sports, as well as education go on in our schools. So it's not, it's not just one or the other. I think that the small schools need to exist, they need to, to be nurtured. I don't disagree with that, but so do the other schools. And in Broad Run, we have some schools, elementary schools with 1,100. And I think that when people in Broad Run talk about small schools, they think of small class sizes, and I think we should do something, depending on what the school board does, but class sizes seem to be an issue with the students and parents that I talk to. sizes seem to be an issue with the students and parents that I talk to. So thank you very much.
Julie Briskman, Algonkin District. Unlike my opponent, my kids have grown up through the Loudoun County Public Schools from kindergarten and first grade. And right now, I have a freshman and a junior at Dominion High School. I've served on the PTA as a room mom, anywhere you can imagine in the high school. I'm now on two committees. I like your idea, Forrest, because for me, for those schools to stay open, I think that we need to make sure that it's a fiduciary decision, because in the eastern side of the county, our schools are in disrepair. We have playgrounds that are in disrepair. They're in desperate need of renovation, and so it's going to be very difficult for me not to make a very critical evaluation of what we do at those western schools if it doesn't make fiduciary sense to keep them open. So I love your idea.
Yeah, this question, again, respect is more of a, based on, more should be asked to the school board again, because again, we do not make that decision. Do we vote nine, or zero, five, six, or whatever, to keep these schools open or closed? That's a school board decision, but at the same token, I do agree that we need to, you know, look at it and make sure that they're being utilized. And if we need to move to a magnet school, charter school, or, you know, have an art school program at these schools and utilize them, then yeah, if that makes sense, then let's do it. But if it makes sense to keep them open, then let's keep them open. If they are the hubs of the community, as, you know, as Jim rightfully said, our schools in the East, or even Dulles area, these are the hubs of our community as well, because we have our scouts, we have church programs there, we have other active faith-based activities there, sports, et cetera. So these are the hubs of our community. So we need to look at it holistically to make sure it's good for the whole community out that way if it makes sense. So thank you.
Part of protect, every supervisor wears two hats. So part of protect is, as an Ashburn Supervisor, I have an obligation to protect the quality of life of my Ashburn constituents, but I also have an obligation to protect the quality of life and the unique heritage and history and culture of Loudoun County as a whole. And I have an obligation to communicate with my school board counterpart, Harris Mahedvi, who is running with me, and he and I have been lockstep for six or eight months now. He's just terrific. We both have an obligation to protect the quality and culture of Loudoun County. And that means he needs to stay tuned in to what makes western Loudoun uniquely western Loudoun, as much as he needs to be tuned in to the issues for him of protecting our education quality in Ashburn District. So we wear two hats. The obligation of every supervisor and every school board representative is both to their district and, I think, to the larger issues of western Loudoun. And protecting our small schools in western Loudoun is part of preserving and protecting all of Loudoun. So it's working in partnership with your school board partner is absolutely paramount.
All right, great. As we move the mic again, we actually have an audience question that we both enjoyed, and I wanted to ask it now. Obviously, everyone is talking about a lot of good solutions and ideas for what the county can do. But the question is, what new or innovative ideas do you have for solving a county-wide or district-wide problem without raising taxes?
Awesome. Well, it gives me an opportunity to talk about this a little bit more. You know, one of the things I have talked about a lot is that to be an effective supervisor, the job is really to get to five, meaning that I have to get four other supervisors to agree with things that I want to do for my community. And when I say I'm going to fight for the small schools in the West, that doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to fight my colleagues. That means I am going to look for ways that unto ourselves, that we can help ourselves. And I'll give you a little bit of a broader explanation of my solution. I have run and developed an antenna program in other states. And the way it works is we can actually erect antenna and leverage the actual rooftops of our schools and our public buildings, lease out those antenna to the major carriers, and create a dedicated funding stream that then I would ask my fellow supervisors to allow me to use to modernize, expand our schools in the West. Do you realize that we don't even have broadband available in the small schools in the East? I mean, sorry, in the West? How can they be prepared for the occupations of the 21st century if they don't have access to the most cutting-edge information technology out there? It's not fair. And we have, I'm going to fight for our students.
Thanks.
Great question. Thank you. The broadband move is, I think it's, paper said it was like $14, $15 million. I would put the utilities in the room and ask them to make reasonable availability to the wireless, high-speed internet carriers. And we would have internet services which would include data and TV all through western Loudoun in months, not years, at no cost to the county. Number two, one of the pieces of my Protect Farmland program, which I'm going to release on October 9th, has the self-funding aspect, which I brought up when I was on the school board, I'm going to bring it up again on as a Board of Supervisors, is you have an affinity credit card that is based on protecting prime farmland Loudoun County. And it generates tens of millions of dollars for, if only 20,000 or 30,000 members of the community sign up for it. It could create even more. Number three, if Howard Hughes Medical Institute paid its fair share, we could solve a lot more problems.
I know I keep asking this, but the thing is, you guys ask questions and I hear answers that don't sound like the questions you ask. So I'm going to ask one more time. Can you repeat the question?
Absolutely. So the question is, what new or innovative ideas do you have for solving a county-wide or a district-wide problem without raising taxes?
Thank you. Well, the first thing, I think we talk a lot about our data centers and the problems with the data centers, but I've had now three meetings with data center communities to talk about a partnership where data center brings to bear some of the finances and partners with our school systems especially. What the data centers have and can offer in STEM programs is amazing. One of our data centers, the HQ Cloud Center, is actually doing a lot to fund some of our first responder programs. And so to partner with agencies and entities and organizations and businesses and communities that are already there is going to be vitally important. Secondly, I don't think people really realize how much our nonprofit community saves our county every single year. So to continue to be, to put a lot of focus, help, support, whether that be facility support or whatever they might need into our nonprofit community. Our nonprofit community saves us money every single year, to the point that we're actually using some of them as arms of the county. So there's a lot of ways, oh, that was fast. Thank you so much.
Sam Croyes, running for Catoctin Supervisor. So Loudoun County has been growing two to three times the regional average. We are absorbing way more of our region's growth than is our fair share. We are adding housing too fast, and we are suffering the consequences. High taxes, traffic, overcrowded schools. The problem is we're adding too many houses. And I have a really smart solution that nobody on the board has thought of before, and that is stop increasing the housing density. The Honorable Chairwoman to my right talks about how she hasn't added any homes to the rural area, and that's true, because she took a big chunk out of the rural area and put it in the transition area, and that's the part that got houses added to it. So she hasn't added any to the rural area. It's to the part that's in the transition area. Well, are you talking about the zoning code? Because that's going to happen soon. Anyway, added a bunch. And I'm sorry to keep picking on you, Forrest. If Caleb was here, I'd pick on him. But the antenna idea, he doesn't seem to understand that our schools are one-story, and so it's not a great place for an antenna. A much better place would be a water tower, for instance, where there are already a bunch of antennas.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, there are a lot of good ideas out there, and one of them is on broadband. We're partnering with private developers to bring broadband to the West by using our county and our school facilities as hubs that then could be expanded out into other parts of the county. But I want to make a broader point, which I think is really more important. I mentioned earlier, I have been responsible for bringing a $736 million of infrastructure to the Dulles District. When I was elected to the Board of Supervisors, the tax rate was $1.285. Today, it's $1.45. So with respect to whoever asked that question, I would argue, I've already done that. And we've done that, not by waving a magic wand, but by growing our commercial tax base. We've gone from 19% into 32% in terms of the amount that we're dependent on residential in this county, because we have been able to grow our commercial tax base. If you invest a little bit of money in economic development, if you invest money in bringing the right people here, recruiting those companies, getting our metro areas going, then you create revenue sources that then pays for your growth. That's exactly what our model has been in the county. That's why we've added 28,000 new jobs since I've overseen economic development on the Board of Supervisors, and that's why we're going to continue to do that if I'm re-elected.
I just want to say, Virginia is, farming is number one. Tourism is number five. We need to focus and get, like, we have western Loudoun, like wineries. We need to bring more revenues from the tourism, so we can invest those into our county. So my proposal is smart development. It doesn't matter, $786 million invested, is it enough to put the people at risk? It's not. We doesn't have enough infrastructure. We need to put more dollars and keep people safe. Right now, the people are not safe on the roads. Every day, there are more accidents. There are more, people are spending time. I want to keep them quality of life with a smart development, where they can work, live, and stay happy. Data centers, I support them, but the locations are awful. We need to bring more jobs into the county. We don't want like, look Fairfax County Parkway, how greener it is. Look Loudoun County Parkway, 10 years, everything is gone. It's a concrete jungle. Where we are going to live, we need more oxygen. We need to make sure people live and stay together. So my proposal is smart development, where they can work, live, and go to schools, enjoy the quality of life, bring the jobs into the county, and make happy families live together and spend quality of time. Thank you.
Decades ago, Shentel, which was the major telephone provider in the Shenandoah Valley, wired the valley for internet. That was not at taxpayer expense. Today, many of our largest tech companies have approached the governor and said they are willing to start sending high-speed internet cable out into the rural areas of Virginia. We need to partner with them. The data centers are providing about a quarter of our total revenue to the county. It's because of them that we've been able to hold taxes down. And we need to always remember that they have become a fundamental and very beneficial part of our economy. Their employees are active in all our nonprofit groups and all our nonprofit efforts, and this is something that doesn't cost the county anything. To the contrary, it pays a lot into our tax coffers and allows us to do so much.
I think the question was innovative new ideas where we don't have to raise taxes. Let's talk about the connect portion of Protect, Connect, and Select. I've knocked on about 3,500 doors personally in this campaign, about 225 a week since April 1st, and I've done it on my bike. Connect means connect through a true multimodal transportation network in this county. I'll focus first in Ashburn, because we've got a great new community center coming in. And my first question to them, which after they briefed it was, how do I get there on my bike? You would be amazed at the positive response I get on the doors when I talk about connecting us with a true multimodal transportation system. You want to solve transportation in Loudoun County? Get people able to drive somewhere, ride somewhere on their bike, or walk there, or get on a transit bus that works to get them around. That will help continue to solve our transportation problem. How do we do it without raising taxes? Well, I think there's some opportunities here for public-private partnerships. I've had some conversations with some data center people and said, "Look, guys, you know, I understand the revenue generated, but you've got a public image problem here. Let's work together to come up with some public-private partnerships to do things that our community will really value." And I think that's top of my list.
Yeah, I would echo Mr. Letourneau here, public-private partnerships. We need to do definitely a lot more of that. We need to continue to get grants from the federal government, the state government, and, you know, just nonprofit programs and for-profit programs that have a lot of grants, and bring those to our county. I'm definitely in favor of looking at what Alexandria did a few, a couple of months ago, actually. They voted to put solar panels on their government buildings and their school buildings. And so they're going to be able to get credits back from the power company. So I'd love to have us look into those ideas into our government buildings and facilities. So it's an all-above approach and looking at what we can do to bring in more revenue so that we can keep the taxes where they are and not increase them if need be. But it's, we have to look at all things out there and make sure they work for us.
My answer is very similar to Coran's. We haven't updated our energy plan in 10 years in the county, so that's going to be one of my major goals when I get on the board. I've spoken with some organizations who believe that we could actually start renovating our buildings in the eastern side of the county and have them be LEED-certified without any extra cost to the county. I also think that we can look at renewables, solar farms, and other forms of energy to save the county. I think we should take an entire inventory of our buildings that we own and operate in the county and see what we can do about making them LEED-certified and use renewables so that we can save the county money, and that could happen without raising taxes.
I think I understand the question. So I've been doing this kind of thing that doesn't require tax revenue for a long time. Started with the Fields Initiative, where we got all the sports clubs together and renovated the fields. Then there was the Loudoun Youth Initiative, and the Loudoun Youth Think, a nonprofit that worked collaboratively with the schools, the county administration, and brought programs like Battle of the Bands. And a lot of those were targeted towards the gap kids, the kids that weren't in sports, that we could find things for them to do. Another initiative that I started as, in year 16 of my 20 years on the Loudoun Parks and Rec Open Space Board, was the Trails Initiative. We had three meetings, and we will get new trails and new bike trails. Thank you.
Sylvia Glass, running for Broad Run Supervisor. One county-wide problem that we have is protecting our environment. I've spoken to a lot of our teenagers who are really concerned about the future of our county, as well as our Commonwealth and nation. So I think we can do some things at a local level, and that is, one thing is to require installation of solar panels or green roofs on flat roofs where it's feasible. We can bring alternative energy companies into our areas. We can make sure that we, developers include park sidewalks and increase the sustainability in their developments.
Yeah, pass it back to Julie. So we have about 100 more questions, and Joe and I are happy to stay here till midnight, but...
They brought their sleeping...
In lieu of that, we're going to go straight to the lightning round. So these questions, we're going to start with Julie, so it'll be easy to just...
To Joe. Give it to Joe.
These are yes, no, or pass answers. That is all you are allowed to say.
Okay.
But, we will give you a minute.
But, at the end, we will give you a minute to have a closing statement and expound upon any one of the questions that you would like to. Okay? So we're going to just keep this in order so we don't get confused, back and forth. Lightning round. First question. Do you want to see more data centers in the county? Yes, no, or pass?
Or another one more. Yes. I'm, well, ah, pass. I'll explain later.
Yes.
I'm going to say yes.
See.
Where appropriate.
Two words.
Not a good listener, Phyllis. Yes.
What the chair said, yes.
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 Chair's answer. Yes, and explain.
Next question. Did you support the reinstitution of the Drug Court?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and I oppose getting rid of it in the first place.
Yes. Let the effort.
Made the effort when I ran for Commonwealth Attorney.
Yes, no, or pass.
You know, you got to have the rules. I'm a lawyer.
A resounding yes.
Yes.
Yes, and I opposed getting rid of it in the first place.
Yes. Let the effort.
Made the effort when I ran for Commonwealth Attorney.
Yes, no, or pass?
You know, you gotta have the rules. I'm a lawyer.
A resounding yes.
Yes.
Yes, and add to youth, too.
Yes.
Okay. Did you approve of the vote to hand over Leesburg's out-of-town water system to Loudoun Water? Pass.
Can you repeat the question?
Did you approve of the vote to hand over Leesburg's out-of-town water system to Loudoun Water?
I'll pass, because I don't understand the question.
I'm passing on that one, too.
Pass.
Okay.
No.
That's not what happened.
Fair enough.
Well, if it didn't happen, I guess I better not answer, but I do say you shouldn't have pulled the rug out on town's planning.
What the chair said.
Yeah, I go with the chair, Ashburn.
No, I voted against it.
Pass. That's not what happened.
I guess we had a nerve. Do you believe Loudoun has adequate public transportation to meet our rapidly growing population?
No.
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 No. No.
No.
Nope.
I can't say no loud enough. Do you support placing armed sheriff's deputies at all elementary schools in Loudoun County?
No.
No.
Not at all.
No.
Nine.
It's a law enforcement call. She keeps cheating. I'll say no.
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 Yes.
No. No.
You guys are getting good at passing it. Thank you. Do you support expanding restrictions on shooting on one's own property?
Yes. With explaining later. Yes. No explanation.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but I'll explain.
No.
Yes.
Yes, and I want to explain.
Yes, with explanation.
Yes.
Yes, with explanation.
Yes, with no explanation. Do you commit to supporting county policies to protect Loudoun LGBT residents from discrimination?
I can't say yes loud enough.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
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 Yes. Of course.
Do you believe the plan to make Route 15 four lanes will improve safety on Route 15?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes, no, and I'll explain.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you commit to supporting county policies to further protect classes such as race, religion, gender, and ethnicity?
Yes.
Don't we, don't we have enough laws? But yes, we need to protect everyone.
Yes.
Yes.
Pass.
And disability. Yes.
Yes, but we have good laws in Loudoun.
Yes.
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 Of course.
Will you support the restrictions and decisions of the Historic District Review Committee?
Repeat it one more time, sorry.
Sure. Will you support the restrictions and decisions of the Historic District Review Committee?
Restrict their decisions?
Would you support their restrictions and their decision, if they have restrictions?
Oh, gotcha.
If, if they proposed restrictions, I should be saying, yeah.
I'll say yes, with explanation.
Pass.
Yes.
Yes. It depends. Explanation.
Yes. Usually.
Perhaps.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm with the chair.
I need to see him. Pass. Okay, so this is the last lightning round question before we give you a minute for your closing statements or to clarify one of your positions. Would you vote to signify to the state legislature that you want Virginia to ratify the ERA?
Absolutely, yes.
Pass.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I did not, and I will explain.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Of course.
So we will, can start there, and everybody has just one minute. Either if you want to respond to anything that you answered there in the lightning round, I know it was a lot, feel free to grab one or all of the issues, or any other kind of closing statement you'd like to make. And we'll get the clock started now. One minute, yes.
All right. Historical, just depends on what they might be recommending, depending on where it is and, you know, the situation. Regarding the guns, we definitely need to do a better job of making sure, you know, people have the right to shoot their guns, which is fine, but we need to be making sure we're doing it in a safe manner to make sure they're, the people who are shooting the guns are safe, and they're their neighbors, be it if it's 100 acres away, 200 acres away, 50 acres away, or whatever. They, everybody needs to be, it needs to be done safely for, for all folks. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Appreciate this forum and dialogue with sharing of the ideas and the questions I've provided. Karan Sainz running for reelection to the Sterling District, representing the Sterling District on the Loudoun County Board of Supervisors, who made history in 2015 by winning our election. So let's make, when, we will be making some more history when we win on November 5th, 2019. I encourage everybody to go out and vote. Make sure you register your friends and the family. The deadline is fast approaching in the next couple of weeks in October. But we're running again to make sure we have a experience on the Board of Supervisors represent Sterling, to make sure we can complete the reinvestment and development that is needed in Sterling and continue to advocate for our Sterling area. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to speak before you. I want to talk about the elephant that's not in the room. There are 20 candidates in this county seeking the highest office in this county, Board of Supervisors. One set of candidates in the Blue Ridge District are not here because they have an individual debate out in Blue Ridge, but there are five Republicans missing tonight. That is a willful snub of the people in this county. It is absolutely disgraceful, and one of them is seeking the office of the chair. They should be ashamed of themselves. Former Congresswoman Comstock dodged town halls for 18 months with a predictable outcome. They are not qualified to hold office in this county for the snub that they gave the League of Women Voters tonight. Thank you very much.
There's no way I can follow that. So I, I will just thank the League. You've been doing this for decades, and it is always a pleasure. The, the debates you run are always professionally managed, and I deeply appreciate it. I want to thank everybody who came out, and I want to thank especially the people of Leesburg, whom it has been my pleasure to represent for a number of years. Thank you so much. It means a lot to us that you bothered to, to come out.
Thank you, all the audience, as well as the organizers who made this event successful. And I want to have a closing statement. As I said, I am from the teacher's family. Education, transportation, and land use are those three priorities. We want people safe. We want to invest first. Bring the people. People automatically go into, migrate anyway. So make sure our infrastructure, schools are funded well. And we don't want to elect anybody supported by the NRAs. The money is coming, where, where the money is coming. So we just want to make sure we elect diverse people who can invest, bring the solve, problem-solving people like me. So vote for a number 5th, bring a change. We don't want a people sitting eight years. They are going to be too strong making decisions for somebody else. We want a change in Loudoun, in Dallas. Vote Sri Nagredi on number 5th. Thank you.
So this is a special place. The county boardroom really is. This dais is. And it's a special place because when we get up here, when we're on the Board of Supervisors, all of the rest of the partisan political drama goes away. Now, doesn't mean we don't have drama. We do have drama sometimes. But when you watch it, and I think even you get a flavor of that tonight, it is not Republican versus Democrat. Sometimes, unfortunately, it might be district versus district, or it might be a little bit of philosophy versus philosophy. But it is not the type of national political drama that you have at the federal government. I used to work at the federal level in the US Senate. I have enjoyed this job so much because you can get so much done here when you're willing to work with your colleagues, when you're willing to listen to the people, and you're willing to represent them. Now, I am very protective of that on the board, which is why sometimes, when it comes to our legislative agenda, I've been very consistent, I will vote against things that are not unique Loudoun issues because it dilutes the rest of the county's legislative effort when we go to Richmond and we have to argue with our General Assembly. Happy to explain it further individually to folks. Thanks.
I'm Sam Crowe. I'm running for Catoctin Supervisor. And just to follow up on the lightning round, regarding guns, like I said, safety is my number one concern, and I'm 100% against anybody shooting houses or people. But like I said, I'm not interested in violating the state law or federal law. Regarding Route 15, I don't think that the plan that the board passed improves safety or flow, and I also think it's too expensive for the county to pay for all by itself, and that's why I want to revisit that. And in summary, I'm not accepting any developer donations. My Democratic opponent is accepting them by the tens of thousands. I printed them off if anybody wants to look at them. I also printed off a bunch of his expenses, which are interesting, too. He's spent more on food than I've spent on my entire campaign, and also paid for parking 16 times, a bunch of times in DC. And there's not any paid parking in the Catoctin District. And I really wanted to pick on my Republican opponent, who took $20,000 from this guy that wants to build condos in the rural area, threw a pack, but he's not here.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the League for having this tonight, and all of you for coming out. As I said, I wouldn't have missed it. Something unique happened in my race, something that's never happened in the state of Virginia before. Not only did the local firefighters' union endorse me, but for the first time in history, the state firefighters' union endorsed a local candidate. I'm also endorsed and teacher recommended, and the employee services union has recommended me. That is because all of them know my commitment to Loudoun County. That means that every single entity that serves you has said they want me to keep serving in this position. I love this job, and I am proud of the work we've done. And moreover, more than anything else, I am proud of the tone we have set in Loudoun County over the past four years. I have been proud to be your chair, and I ask for your vote on November 5th.
I thank the League for organizing this, and I hold you accountable if we don't get at least 80% of the registered voters instead of the normal 28%. I hold you personally accountable. Route 15, four lanes, VDOT needs to be evaluated, studied, scrutinized, and this board, the board that's currently here, needs to do some homework. It's a debacle how little support they're providing this county, and it should not continue. I'm a recently retired attorney. If I had a seven-lawyer law firm and I was practicing law full-time, I could not honestly tell you I could do this job as chair full-time. I could not do that. I think there needs to be an explanation, or he needs to resign from his law firm, or stop practicing law, or admit he's not going to do this job full-time. One of those things has to be said because the truth will come out. I welcome any questions. My homepage is Facebook, is on Facebook. It's candidate Bob Onizur, there's lots of detail there, and I welcome any communications of that regard. Thank you.
I just want to tell everyone that I have a thing with me that whenever I am concentrating or when I'm in deep thought, it looks like I'm angry. I'm not, I'm very happy to be here. My wife is constantly reminding me to smile. I'm not an angry person. I'm very, because this is a privilege. And I just want to say from, on behalf of my wife, Nicole, and I, and our children, Brayden and Ella, who the Catocton folks and the Watford folks and the Loudoun folks have welcomed us into this community, thank you so much for the privilege of coming before you and sharing our ideas and talking about what we want to do to bring service to our community. That's what this is really about. And one of the reasons that we've run such a robust campaign is because I believe that the way you demonstrate what you will do is by showing people what you have done. And so what I've done for the last 25 years is service to the American people at every level of government. And in the last 12 months, we've put together a campaign that we could be proud of, just to say to you that you are important enough for us to put together an organization that will engage you in a, in a thoughtful way and take in all the issues and try to provide solutions, just to give you a preview of what we would do if we get, if you give us the opportunity. So November 5th, please give me an opportunity, and I want to thank all of my former colleagues, I mean, my colleagues for being here, and thank you, too, to the women, League of Women Voters, for having us. Thank you very much.
I'd like to also thank the League of Women Voters for allowing us to speak tonight. I just want to say that I come from a family of activism, of civil rights and women's rights. As a board member, as a Board of Supervisor member, I will lobby our General Assembly so that we can pass women's rights, that, that we support women's issues, that we pass the ERA, that we pass a Virginia fair wage law. These are some things that we can do. Again, thank you all.
Thank you. Jim Bottles, Broad Run District Supervisor. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. I have a long history going back to when I was a little boy, sitting at a desk in, in a hot summer, collecting signatures so that DC, Guam, and Puerto Rico could vote in presidential elections. And so, so League of Women Voters has a long history of voting and voting rights. It's very important, a very important thing. As a local businessman, I understand, you know, the strong need for diverse community and take steps to broaden our housing options here in Loudoun. And I will do that as your supervisor. The new comp plan needs to, needs a lot of attention around the metro, and I can, I can do that. I can bring that to place. I am, you know, I'm, I'm a collaborator. I bring people together, and I do that, getting people to work together to get things done in a very nonpartisan way, where actually it becomes their idea. Thank you.
Julie Briskman, running for Algonkin District. I passed on the data centers question because I want to see what's in the pipeline first. I think they're driving up land costs so dramatically that we have a real difficulty with building affordable and workforce housing, and I think we need better messaging on the data centers. I know that they have done great things for our tax rate, but we need better messaging so that people understand that. When I knock doors, that's all I hear is the ugly data center, so we need to think about their aesthetics and hopefully powering them with renewables. I'm a single mom of two teenagers. I've lived and worked in the county for almost 20 years. I'm running because I believe we should fully fund our schools, support working women, and more intelligently develop in the county. And when I say support working women, the person I'm running against did not vote for the Commission on Women and Girls, and she voted against the ERA. And I would argue that it's a county issue. 70% of the women in my district are part of the labor force. They need to get equal pay for equal work and equal access to health care. Thank you so much, League of Women Voters. This has been a great journey, and I'm really looking forward to November 5th, when I can sit here officially. Good night.
Thank, thank you to all our candidates. Thank you very much for coming.
I want to point out a couple of deadlines, well, a couple of dates. October 15th is the deadline to register to vote, so please make sure that you are registered and your registration, registration is up to date. October 16th, we have another forum for the General Assembly at the Northern Virginia Community College campus in Sterling. Community College campus in Sterling. Please join us for that as well. And absentee voting is already started for those of you who have an excuse. I would ask that all the voters take a look at Vote 411, 411. I would ask that all the candidates make sure that they have information up on 411, Vote 411. And I want to thank our moderators, Joe and Ray, who've done such a wonderful job.